Call the me to order at six thirty-one, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Present.
Present.
Presence. All right, everybody's present. So we have another oath of office tonight, a new officer coming in. These always make me feel really old, so we want to congratulate you. We have Officer William Piper, and I think Chief Guchow is going to give the board an introduction.
Sure, so embarrass you first, William, if you and your mom want to step up front? Thank you. It's my privilege tonight to introduce and swear in Antioch's newest police officer, William Piper. William is not only a dedicated and capable young man, but he's also one of Antioch's own, a lifelong resident of our community. His deep-rooted desire to give back to our town that shaped him is a testament to the values and spirit of Antioch. William graduated from Antioch Community High School in two thousand nineteen, Mayor, and continued his education at the University of Wisconsin-Walki, where he earned a degree in criminal justice last year. Throughout his academic journey, William remained committed to his goal of becoming a public servant, driven by a passion for law enforcement and a strong sense to duty to protect and serve the Antioch community. Tonight, as we officially welcome William into our ranks, those of us who are part of the APD family are reminded of the honor and responsibility that comes with the badge that will be pinned on his chest in a few moments. In our department, we accept nothing less than the best for our community. As a department, we hold ourselves to the highest standards. We seek out only those who embody the utmost professionalism, integrity, dedication to serving with pride. William has demonstrated these qualities, and it is with great confidence that we welcome him to our department. William is joined tonight by several important people in his life who have been an integral part of his journey. His mother Beth, who will have the honor of pinning his badge this evening. His father Charlie, his sister Ashley, and his girlfriend Valerie. We thank them for their support and for sharing William with us as he embarks on this new chapter of service. William, we all welcome you to the Antioch Police Department with great pride. I know that you will uphold the traditions of excellence that define our department and our community, and you will serve with the same dedication and commitment that have brought you to this moment. With that moment, I will ask the clerk to swear William in.
All right, Mom, you're on.
Who are the three little ones?
Oh, hey, guys, welcome.
Welcome to Antioch.
All right, well, thank you and congratulations. A couple other announcements, events coming up. There is a fundraiser for Penny's Purpose on Saturday at Sandlots of Salem in the morning, a softball tournament that goes throughout the day. Next Friday, the Chamber has their golf outing on the twenty-third at Fox Lake. And then, last but not least, this weekend is the grand opening of the park, finally, which will be opening at eleven o'clock on Saturday morning. Right now, weather looks like it is going to cooperate, so that's good. All right, anyone sign up for citizens wishing to address the board? All right. Five items on the consent agenda. Is there any request to remove any of those items? Not entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Motion trustee, Blue Thart, second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. First item on the regular business is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee McNeil, second trustee Berman. Discussion regarding these items, I think I saw some bond payment was the largest amount on this. Is that correct, Zeta? Seven hundred thousand and another one? Okay, so. One million thirty-nine is for the bond payment. Okay, any other questions or discussion?
What's the bond payment for?
All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of an ordinance granting land use relief for the property located at nine twenty-seven Carney Court, Antioch, Illinois. Special use as a weightlifting club. This is ordinance number twenty-four dash oh eight dash forty-nine. Do I have a motion and a second wave?
Don't move.
Motion trustee Peterson, second. Motion waving the second reading, trustee Peterson, second trustee Blue Thart. Discussion, why not? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution ratifying the renewal and extension of the collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Resolution Number twenty-four dash sixty-seven. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion trustee Masek, second trustee McNeil. Anything on this? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item, number nine, is consideration and approval of a resolution accepting and awarding the bid for the twenty-twenty-four road program to Payne and Dolan in the amount of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eighty dollars and seventy-five cents. Resolution number twenty-four dash sixty-eight. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee Berman. Roll call, please. Go ahead.
Can we just get a brief breakdown of which roads are going to be done so the public's aware?
Danny, yep.
Good evening. The roads that are scheduled within this bid for twenty-twenty-four road program, resurfacing are Bayshore Drive, Boss Court, which are in Landmark subdivision, Boynton Terrace, which is just south of eighty-three and one seventy-three. It's a small cul-de-sac. Actually, we're just doing the cul-de-sac. It was never finished when the home builder was there. First Street, which is just off of Main, Highland Avenue, which is ties into First that goes to North Avenue. Maplewood Drive in Oakwood Knowles, Linden Lane in Oakwood Knowles, Bridgewood Drive in Oakwood Knowles, Elmwood Lane in Oakwood Knowles, and Meadow Court in Oakwood Knowles.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing and approving the demolition of a building owned by the Village of Antioch, Illinois, an abandoned wellhouse at sixty-one McMillan Road. Resolution number twenty-four dash sixty-nine. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Blue Thart.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil. This is the first time this is up, so there's any questions about this matter? Any questions from any of the trustees on this matter? Trustee Blue Thart?
Are we aware of any other abandoned facilities we own anywhere around town?
I'm not aware of anything. I'll defer to Mr. Director.
If you're aware.
I'm not aware of anything.
That's all I.
Any other questions?
And this is on Ash Pallet property?
This is an action, yes, there's an easement there, an old easement that's been abandoned, but it's on Ash Pallet.
Because I don't have the map in my packet, so it said refer to the map. I'm just trying to see where it is, if it's another place they're going to pile sky high with pallets.
It's literally right in front of Ash Pallet. It's, if you know where Weeby Wax is and Ash Pallet, it's literally in between Ash Pallet and Weeby Wax. There's a small cinder block building right there.
Oh, well, make it easier for them to back in and out with their trucks instead of destroying our road right across the street from them?
Well, as you know, that's a whole separate legitimate issue. As you know, we've been pursuing that from a legal perspective, so that's a separate code enforcement issue. But I don't think it's going to change any type of turning radius or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you.
There's nothing we need to do to seal or close the well itself, correct?
No.
It's just the house. Yeah, okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, five voting yes, motion carries. Six, I can count. Consideration approval of a resolution authorizing and approving engagement agreement for the Village of Antioch, Illinois regarding potential eminent domain services. Resolution number twenty-four dash seventy. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee McNeil, who did the second? Just second trustee Pierce. This is the first time, this is any discussion on this other than we can't discuss litigation? Any questions? All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Last item is consideration and approval of a resolution to accept and award the bids for a sidewalk replacement along Main Street to Everlast Blacktop in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars. Resolution number twenty-four dash seventy-one. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee McNeil, I had a second by trustee Berman. This is another fairly new item, a budgeted item, so I don't know if there's any questions on this bid itself. All right, if not, roll call, please.
Oh, oh, sorry.
There's no guarantee when they replace.
Like, is there a warranty or something?
Yeah, when they backfill or do the backfill, whatever they got in, I'm not an expert in.
They'll be full surely?
What I'm saying, so if they rip out something that the proper gravel, whatever the logistics is for a sidewalk, that we don't have the sinking sidewalks in, say, a year from now. If they put it in their writing that I can sit there and say, well, if it sinks in a year, whatever, you got to come out and fix what you replaced.
That's a fair point. We'll discuss that. That's fine before we execute any agreements.
That makes sense that they put somewhere, yeah, we back build it, right?
Right.
You know, we have a problem with driveway.
Be more than happy to discuss that with this.
Sure. Danny, you look like you want to interject.
So that have been in place for many years. So the settlement issues that we would see, we would take care of that with gravel, the contractor, but most of the settlement.
So I had asked, I don't know if she got to you on this today, Rachel, to call a couple of the references that they had. Were you guys able to do that?
I did not hear whether we would.
Oh, maybe she gave it to Michael, okay.
I did reach out to all three, four references, and unfortunately have not received any feedback yet.
Okay, so we still have a contract that'll come back, okay.
Just because they pulled stuff out, even though it's settled, they pull stuff out and they'll put stuff back. So I'm settling. That's how bright I am, and that's what my knowledge is.
All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Onto the administrators' reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make the board aware that over the last couple of weeks, staff and the mayor have been conducting interviews for the position of village prosecutor for our Waukegan Courthouse and our branch courts. That list has been narrowed to a shortlist of four, and second interviews are being conducted with the mayor and I. We hope to bring a request for confirmation by the board for the appointment at the next board meeting. Lacombe has achieved a significant milestone by holding its first member board meeting. By this vote taking place and establishing the board marks the transformation of Lacombe from a mere concept to a fully fledged organization. As a founding member, Antioch will hold a vote on the board in perpetuity for any larger impactful decisions that would impact our community. The mayor, Director Heimbro and trustee Blueheart and I attended a Woods of Antioch meeting earlier this week to answer questions about the upcoming multi-year road replacement program in their neighborhood. The HOA board just asked that I express their thanks to the entire village board for their commitment to seeing this much-needed infrastructure program move forward. They believe it's a great gesture and understand that it's going to be a multi-year program, and they're willing to be patient. At the next board meeting, I just want to forecast that our village architects and our project managers for our capital projects, Village Hall and Public Works will be present to join staff to present our progress on the design and schematic of the new Public Works facility. The board will have the opportunity at that time to view the design options and hear some estimated costs. And we plan to outline many of the difficult decisions that we've made in our efforts to reduce costs without sacrificing the building's intended functions. On August sixth, our entire park's design team, along with staff and our engineers, walked the current Sequite Park site. There was a list created of punch list items that the contractor has to remedy yet. There is nothing significant. They range from some minor issues such as adding caulk in some of the concrete joint areas, a little bit more involved corrections such as adjusting some of the pitch of some of the flagstone that was put in place to improve the water drainage. Bowler's been hard at work this week to address those issues. Some of that work may extend beyond the actual opening of the park, but it didn't really impact the use of the park by the community. Assistant Administrator Moran and I have begun attending regular meetings with some neighboring village administrators and assistant administrators. A new group has been formed.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Back to the park walkthrough and stuff that you guys perform. What's the story on the trees that are over there? Are they changing early or are they dying?
No, Dennis has had some conversations, and that's correct me if I'm wrong, with our landscape architects and Breezy Hill. The trees are stressed from planting, and there may be some concern of overwatering of some of them. So they are being closely monitored, and there are guarantees in place if we have problems that they will be replaced.
And how long is that guarantee?
Two that have been replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. The assistant administrator administrator meetings are a new opportunity for administrators within northern Lake County to share ideas and discuss how we can better serve our communities. We found it very beneficial, especially in my kind of dual role capacity. I've learned quite a bit. The mayor and I met with representatives from the Chamber of Commerce recently. I wanted to inform the board, the chamber does plan to come before the board in the near future to discuss whether or not you are open to considering a return of a carnival as part of their Taste of Summer event. They conveyed that they do not believe that the event will be sustainable without their ability to incorporate a carnival. They have identified a different operator who they feel possess the safety record that our community deserves. But I wanted to bring this up early to the board's attention to allow you the opportunity to think about it and have conversations with our community members and have adequate time to put the necessary thought to what you may wish to decide as a board on that matter. Several staffing updates to outline. As you know, we recently brought in an interim parks director, Jeff McKeela. He started working limited hours within the parks office and has his other commitments start to phase out in the coming weeks. His hours will increase in office with the staff. Will be hosting a gathering to thank Director Quilty for her years of service as she heads into retirement. That will be held on August thirtieth from at Williams Park from eleven to one. Love to see the board join. Lori is in the process of creating a flyer, and that will be distributed in the very near future with some additional details. Staff has been hard at work filling several vacant positions within the village. In addition to our previously announced hiring of our new Parks Department Administrative Assistant, Tiffany Berry and Code Enforcement Officer Phil Mandura, we will soon be welcoming a few additional team members. Our new police records assistant, Kelly Poson, will be starting on Monday. She comes with us with prior experience from the courts. We've also received an offer of acceptance to fill the recreated position of Communications and Special Events Specialist. This future employee comes to us with a vast amount of experience and currently works for the city of Plano, Texas. With the need for relocation, her start date is going to be slightly delayed, and she will join us at the end of September. We are currently recruiting for a new accountant for our finance department. Zeta is looking to proactively fill some for some upcoming vacancies that will occur at the end of the year is the result of a couple of retirements. She's making some tweaks in the structure of her department. And we've also posted a restructured position for a business liaison specialist who will work with the Economic Development Department to help attract new businesses, retain current businesses, and serve as liaison to the business community and other business-focused organizations within Antioch. And then I do hope to come to the next board meeting with a final draft of park rules for Sequite Park. Now, we'd love to get that together ahead of time. However, we do have rather robust park regulations that are in place that cover all of our parks. There's going to be a need for some tweaks that we continue to have some discussions on within the new parks since it has some amenities that our other parks don't have, such as the fire pits. We'll have to make some determinations of what the appropriate hours for those will be. The playground likely will have some different hours than the general park itself. Working on setting established hours for the automatic locks in the restrooms. And then, of course, while skateboards and bikes are allowed in the majority of our parks, I don't think that we want to see bikes and skateboards riding on the paths in that park specifically. So we're working to develop those and make sure that they're comprehensive, and then staff will work on coming up the appropriate signage. Yes, trustee.
Since you're talking about rules for the park, I noticed that a lot of our other parks, you know, our policy says no smoking in our village property, but you don't see signage that states that. And I don't know if our policy includes vaping. We've got somebody exuding a cloud that could probably start a thunderstorm sometimes. So that may be something for the attorney to look at if our ordinances need to be changed.
Yes.
And our signage needs to be appropriate to cover both items?
Yes, we could certainly take a look at that for the signage out the remainder of the village's parks. We'll work with our design team to make sure that whatever signage we post in the new park as well as fitting for the environment. We want it to obviously be aesthetically pleasing with the amount of work that's gone into that new park, so we don't just want to start plastering up aluminum signs all over the park with the rules. So we'll try to come up with something that will integrate nicely with the aesthetics of the park. And then, lastly, as you're probably aware, our Hitchcock Group, who was helping working on our Centennial Park master plan, had a community input meeting. I'm told that there was a lot of good and positive input from the community and some things that we didn't think of, so it served its intended purpose, and that project continues to move forward.
I'd like to suggest that we do a post prior to this weekend about no bike riding, no skateboarding in the park, and put some temporary signs up because I think you're going to have that be an issue immediately. And if we don't have it posted and don't let people know that that's the case, then they'll use that as an excuse.
Sure, as long as the board is comfortable with some.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if everyone agrees, I just, you know, just something temporary, just so kids know that they're not allowed. Because you know what will happen if there's no signage or necessarily, it doesn't say we can't ride in.
They'll ride anyways, well.
At least we have something.
Thursday night events.
I agree.
One more update about the park, which is not good news, is it appears our chosen vendor ghosted us on the cafe. So we're a little bit back to the drawing board on that, and so.
Yeah, we've, since the board approved the proposal, we've made extensive efforts to both contact or both email and phone, and we can't get a return call. It appears that we are going to have to go back to square one on the drawing board with that project. We're trying to come up with some alternative options that may make it a little bit more enticing to other providers. We're reaching out to other communities that have similar projects going and seeing kind of luck they're having.
McHenry has some project going on their riverfront. Maybe they got inputs there. And the Facebook, which you shouldn't always believe, and though people love to post a lot of stuff to it. They were talking, a lot of the local restaurants were concerned that they have to cook off-site and bring back onsite. So I don't know if that's true or not, but.
Yeah, based on some of the fact that I know our previous business development manager got, some of the concerns were with the limited options that would be available on the premises with not having the ability to have an open flame. You know, it doesn't have the ancillar hood system in, so you can't have open flames, can't have fryers, that sort of thing. So some of the vendors had some, oh, there were some challenges associated with that. So we're exploring some other options that may make it easier for them to broaden the offerings there beyond just having prepared foods, you know, whether or not we allow them to cook it off-site or whether or not we provide a little bit of a space for them to have, you know, a portable food trailer or something like that where they can actually physically cook on an open flame or a fryer, some additional offerings. But we're, again, we're going to talk to some other municipalities and government entities that have currently operating cafes within their parks and see what we're missing that they have.
This is one, one of people don't know, so. All right, thank you. Village Clerk.
The courtesy petition packets for the April first, twenty twenty-five, the solidated election will be available in our office next week. We expect the press release to arrive later this week.
You say next week, you mean Monday or?
Twentieth, I think, right?
Twenty. The first day to circulate petitions is Tuesday, the twentieth. However, the courtesy packets may be available Monday afternoon. Most details will be provided in the press release coming out later.
Thank you.
All right, department reports, community developments.
Yes, thanks.
Oh, sorry. I didn't have any trustee reports to write, but trustee, any reports?
No, I don't have a report, but I got a question on my procedures and processes, trustee. Because I hear, don't go to this person and talk to this person, go to this person, talk to that person. I don't know what the considered appropriate format is for us as legislatures and not the executive branch to approach people and talk to things.
Sure.
So, you know, I have concerns. I've been on boards where we have to specifically have a vote on the board of all seven members of the board, whether they approve a request to staff members or we have to go directly to the administrator, and other mayors have been like, just go to whoever you want to and talk to whoever you want to, but I just want to make sure we have some format that I can ensure that I'm not stepping on toes.
And I don't think that the intent of that is for those purposes, of course. For example, if you have a question on legislation, I would hope, it'd be sad, trustee, if you didn't call me and ask me about the same thing or legal. The idea is that if a department head receives a directive from one trustee and a second directive from a second trustee, which is in opposite to the first directive, it puts the department head actually in a really bad position where they don't know who to follow or who to listen to. And that's oftentimes why these policies come through, at least in my experience of the municipal layer for, sad to say, a couple decades now. But that is, that I believe is the impetus for this. It normally is the impetus for this when this occurs in municipalities, that there, that a department head, I'm going to make up a department that's not here just to avoid any conflicts, a health department. You know, we should be doing this from trustee X, Y, and Z, or Commissioner X, Y, and Z. And I've literally been in the middle of this, and then trustee, the second trustee comes in and be like, how can you be doing this? This is against everything that I believe in, blah, blah, blah. And it puts the department head in a real bad spot. Because then the department head has to go to the mayor and basically, I'll use a colloquial term, rat out two trustees to say they're fighting about this. What do I do? And so it's easier to have a chain of command where the legislators legislate and get information from department heads, but primarily through, you know, legal executive or the administrator, deputy administrator, than have multiple lines of communication, multiple lines of direction.
Does that make sense, trustee?
It makes sense, but so what I hear you saying is I shouldn't go into either you for legal questions, the mayor for like policy questions, and the administrator to ask if we can get information from department head?
I did not say that. What I said.
I'm trying to define. I'm trying to get a definition here.
And I have not seen the memorandum, and that would be helpful to see it at some point, but I just.
There's a memorandum?
Oh, no, I thought you.
No, I'm hearing, I'm hearing rumbles.
So let me, so, so since. So since I'm not the easiest person I always get ahold of, I would say that, you know, if there are requests of staff that should first go to probably Jeff, that he has nothing else to do, and then probably secondly to Jim if he's not available. But I would say that would probably be the best way to manage the workflow. Is that, you agree, Jeff? Okay. And then if you have a legal question, don't call him. But yeah, I would say Jeff, and Jeff's, you know, always pretty accessible to, he's a much better communicator than I am. So he'll get the message out to the right departments as soon as possible. That make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay. Any other questions or things with trustees? Yep, trustee Mason.
You can read it.
For me?
Just you can approve it, so I just want that to be minutes. And I'll kind of explain.
Okay. Do you want to read it to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let Jimmy read it in the record.
All right, I have not seen this before, so I'll go slow. Tonight, I would like to address.
Tonight I would like to address a matter of utmost importance regarding the dissemination of information about our village events. As you're all aware, we have a strict social media policy in place to maintain the integrity, uh, and accuracy of information we share with our community. Recently, there have been instances where village information, particularly regarding the profit and loss numbers at our Thursday night concert events has been inaccurately represented on social media platforms. This misrepresentation not only undermines the credibility of our village, but also creates confusion and misperceptions among, amongst our residents and visitors. It is crucial that we adhere to our social media policy and refrain from sharing inaccurate or misleading information about our events. By doing so, we uphold the trust and transparency that our community expects from us. I urge all of us to be mindful of the impact our words and actions have on the reputation of our village. Let us work together to ensure that the information we share is accurate, reliable, and in line with our social media policy. Thank you for your attention and let us continue to uphold the values of honesty and integrity in all of our communication. And then there is a spreadsheet that is attached to, um, this. Thank you.
I think, I think these lines were added, right? Is that?
Yeah.
The, the last two lines?
Yeah. So it's just thank.
So yeah, it's the, um.
Staff and I thank data. Thank, thank, uh.
So this, so for reference, this, um, and it'll be, we'll put it in the minutes. It was the, um, Thursday night concert, uh, expense and revenue report that I believe was, uh, Mr. Searle reported on. And, um, since the last reports, the revenue side, I believe stayed the same at seventy five thousand, five ninety one. And there were two line items added, uh, to the la, to the expense side, um, for staffing, for probably overtime or additional staffing for those events. One was public work staffing, the amount of two thousand, one hundred and twenty seven dollars and twenty six cents. Another one for police department staffing of three thousand, six dollars and sixty one cents, bringing the grand total, um, up about five, well, five thousand, one hundred and thirty three dollars to, um, a total of seventy six thousand, two fifty one, fourteen in expenses versus seventy five, five ninety one in rep, that accurate.
Right.
Does he? Okay.
Yeah, whatever staff did. The only reason I brought this to the attention that we're not here to make it a profit center. We do this as, yes, over there. Oh, because a lot of it's by generosity. And being a past member of the wrestling squad when we didn't get tax money. These events happen for the generosity from Raymond Chevy. Sponsorships from Budweiser. If we didn't have those, money would have to come from somewhere else. But we don't want to say it just came from peer sales. That's one thing I just want to make clear. That's generosity from others that made these events happen. Just not one item. We made it from food sale. The generosity of others, the sponsorships that staff did generate this whole program. If we have a social media policy, they should be putting out fingers, not individual thing. Made it all from food sale. So that's all I had to put this whole, we're good together. But not think that we're selling seventy five dollars a year.
Unfortunately, we're not.
Right, right.
Unfortunately, we're not.
We must have invited our Wisconsin.
Yes, yes.
Right. We give.
Yeah.
You know, we give.
Sure.
You know, kind of like, thank you. Well, thank you for the sponsors that made this event happen.
Thank you. Um, yeah, the clerk, his question.
So the basic that you want the statement for the statement and?
I think both of them should be part of it.
And are there objections or any trustees to include that in the?
I have no objection. All right. Um, Director Garrigan, uh, community developments.
Yes.
Oh, one other. I was gonna say, you better start talking fast. Stay up there. Make it make, yeah.
Probably for the administrator, I've asked for a pay study because I've seen the job. Especially the one that in the police department for twenty two dollars an hour. We lost someone over to Gurnee. I don't think we're in line in our pay structure. We need it to be desperately need a pay study because we're losing.
Jimmy, address it.
Other communities.
Um, yeah. So that is, uh, been a, a topic of discussion here. And I did speak with, um, Administrator Gutchow and, um, I believe the spending authority is twenty thousand dollars. Is that? Am I correct in that which number? Um, we had a proposal from, um, HR Gov to do a, a study of fifty five positions in the village and the number was twelve thousand dollars roughly. And I have instructed the, um, administrator and, and, uh, Mr. Moran to, let's move forward with that study so we can get some comps. The numbers are changing all the time. And, um, for instance, we recently had a post that don't, no staffs on line, right? Um, there was a job posted for the fire department just recently that, that, that really, you know, started some eye opening, uh, numbers. So that's, we're, we're in the process of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Zay.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. I wanted to provide the board just a, a couple of updates. Um, with respect to Brown Road, I didn't want to let this advise the board that, uh, ComEd will be out there, uh, deactivating the current poles and putting in new utilities along Brown Road. Uh, I've been identified for Monday. And at that point, uh, once the utilities, new utility poles are, uh, installed, um, the developer will be able to proceed with, uh, construction of Brown Road. They've estimated approximately two month, two months.
I have a question about that because it's such, are they going to literally, is that going to be all, all that land removed because it's such an elevation difference?
The grade, the grade is coming down eight feet. You can imagine that. So there'll be basically all the way to, to, to one seventy three. So there'll be a complete reconstruction of Brown Road. Again, the applicant, the developers identified approximately two months to complete it. Um, we're working, we actually have a scheduled meeting with all the neighbors next week here at the village hall to give them an update. And obviously there'll be a temporary new access, uh, for the neighbors, the five or six residents who live back there in Brown Road. And I'm working with the developer right now on a maybe a revised access point that may make more sense for everybody.
And when they cut the power, are they, uh, cutting it to the residents too for some amount of time?
They have, they'll comp, they'll lose their Comcast service. They're, we're going to try to minimize that, um, basically that interruption. Uh, Mr. Scarpelli has been very kind to provide, uh, anybody, you know, to be able to have the opportunity to work at the dealership Kia, if they need internet or phone to work out his dealership for an office for one day or for how many hours. But ComEd's represented that it will be, you know, we're talking about hours, not a whole day. Monday.
This Monday?
Um, I don't have a time. They just identified, no, no, I'm sorry, just the five or six residents back there, unincorporated residents. But again, we're trying to work with unincorporated residents because they're being impacted. So, um, so other thing I, um, I want to let the board that, uh, we have, I've been working with Lennar, Lennar Homes is able to finally get the financing for phase four. So we'll probably potentially be seeing, uh, the developer moving some dirt, uh, for phase four in the club lands finally. We're, we are anticipating, um, this spring, but there were some, um, complicating factors with Lennar's financing and, but they do have financing. And, uh, we've been working with Lennar on that proposed project. Uh, I want to advise that I've been meeting with the PML theater. They will be coming in with a major facade grant, uh, in the foreseeable future. Um, so I just wanted to give the board heads up that that's a major facade grant that will be coming in for phase two. You'll probably recall, we, we did approve a, um, initial phase one, um, facade renovation for that theater. But they will be coming in for a new marquee, a new blade sign and a renovation on the first floor of the historic theater. So I wanted to give the board, that's one major facade grant that we're looking at. Um, in addition, I want to advise the board that, uh, in September, you'll be seeing a proposal, the concept, uh, for CarMax on one seventy three. Didn't, uh, make it through, uh, the plant commission. So I anticipate that coming to the board sometime in September of this, this year. Um, uh, with regards to, um, uh, co enforcement, I just wanted to say that we are working very closely with our, uh, new, uh, Mr. Andora. Uh, very closely, staffs are working with him and I think we're making a lot of progress in the field. I've been meeting him on a daily basis. And, um, I, I think there's a complete new, really positive approach towards co enforcement, working on a team effort with our new co enforcement officer. Uh, with, with respect to that. And finally, I want to let you know that we have scheduled a meeting, um, next week, uh, with the developer. A core acquisitions for the three or four outlets in one seventy three. They do have a contract with Ev Jarris for, um, potentially three or four commercial outlets, um, for that property. So we're anticipating a meeting hopefully next week with that developer. With that, I'll conclude my update.
And so I had two things, Michael, that I know you've been working on that you did not mention. Um, one of them is, give me a read my own notes. One of them is, um, we've been talking internally and I'd like this to bring to the board, a revised facade grant, um, program where it's, uh, a six month window or within the fiscal year, either you lose it, use it or lose it. Um, I believe in particular, we've been, we may ask Oliveries to come back in and give us an update on what that money is.
So those guidelines are, they're completed. In fact, I wasn't scheduled for the cow meeting tonight.
Okay.
Guess we canceled the cow meeting. I would defer, but the, the actual, um, revised facade guidelines as highlighted by the mayor. Um, streamlining the length of period of time. There are additional, some additional guidelines, uh, some architectural guidelines that I did incorporate. So I'll be more than happy at our next call meeting to bring those guidelines back to the board to, to review.
And then, uh, Michael and Legal have been, um, meeting up on the developer of the clubhouse in Clublands a bit. Putting some strict timelines on the completion of that building because we're receiving multiple complaints from residents about the, the pro, progress on the clubhouse. So.
So we've been meeting, I've been meeting, uh, with the developer and association on a weekly basis. Um, there have been unfortunately some setbacks in the past few weeks. They've been having some challenges with subcontractors. Um, so I'm, I'm, we're dealing with them on a weekly basis. It's imperative, um, times to the essence. We have to get that pool completed, uh, before the end of the season. Um, so, um, the, there, there's still, there's still a fair amount of work with regards to the air, the pool tile work that they had to complete. Um, siding, the most important thing, siding on the clubhouse. So they, they're anticipating they initially identified end of August. I think realistically we're looking at either end of September, end of October.
Are we looking at their parking lot too? Because I know when I, I rode my bike out there one day and I was just amazed at like a corner of the parking lot was washing away.
Right. There, there is, there is, there's a fair amount of work and final grading, um, around the pool. So we're, we're, again, we're meeting with them on a weekly basis with their architect, uh, their project manager. It's unfortunately been a challenging project for a relatively small clubhouse.
All right. Thank you. Um, what do we have next? Uh, finance, Director Torres.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, board. Want to start out that we start our audit, the field work on Monday. Friday, we turn all the data in before they present themselves on Monday. They'll be here possibly three days, maybe four, depending on the process. Also, the actuary, the pen, the police pension actuary report is completed. As soon as I get the final draft, I'll email it to you. This year, what I would like to do differently is separate the audit presentation, uh, and not bring in the actuary presenter on that day. So as soon as I have the final draft, we'll set up, uh, we'll put it on the agenda and then the audit will be at a later time. So it's not a long night with audit information. Also, I want to report that we finally completed and used the ARPA money that we have. So we're closing up with the state. So that's done. Also, I want, on Friday, I'll be sending the financial statements to all of you. Please play, please pay close attention to the memo output on the cover sheet. But I do want to go over some numbers just for the record. I know we haven't had a capital meeting, but the mayor and I have looked at the end of year numbers. It looks like the general fund we're estimating with how audit entries to have like a million dollar surplus. But even so currently, we're sitting with operating funds at three point nine million, which is, um, a good cash flow. But at this time, as we discussed during the budget process, I would like to move those a million dollars to the capital fund. So we could use it is, that capital fund is the annual capital fund is the one where we sit down, we talk about projects that are going to happen during that year. In the general fund, I created a cash account. When you get your reports on Friday, you'll see I'll highlight them in yellow. Those are special cash accounts that I've created. They're not restricted, but I segregated only because there's always been discussion about using three million dollars for the long-term capital projects. So I set those funds aside. That is three million dollars. You'll also see that the general fund was, came up to four million as of last fiscal year. Also at the East Business District, I created another cash account at the East Business District. And it's three million dollars that we have set aside for long-term projects. We also have right now sitting in our annual capital fund, one point one million. And we also have in the water sewer fund, we set aside two point five million dollars for long-term projects. But they have slightly below two million dollars in reserves. So please pay close attention to those numbers. Because those are the numbers that we discuss when we have those big capital project meetings, like the parks, like, um, the buildings that we're building and remodeling. So please pay close attention. And trustee Mason, you are correct about, um, staffing with the staff. It's sad to see long-term employees leave the village because not only most of them, all of them are, um, great employees, but also you lose a lot of history. It is sad to say that I'm going to be losing two shining stars. One is retiring this year before the end of the year and the next one, then my next retiree will be in the spring. Um, nothing said in stone on that, but we do have one certainly that is leaving in November. It's sad to say when employees leave like that, not only I lose a shining star because I have a great staff, but also the history that comes with them. So I just wanted to remind you that it is a loss for us when we lose employees that have so much history with them. That's all I have. Any questions?
I, I just want to, um, thank you. Um, just again, our philosophy is obviously, um, what our goal is, is to keep when there is money, not just leave it in the general fund because it ultimately will get spent by somebody somehow. But to put that money either in reserves or the capital reserves, because when these projects are done, we still have a lot of deferred maintenance projects that we're going to need money for. So we want to make sure that those accounts have funds for the future.
That's correct. And just so you know, when I talk about the capital fund, that's a three hundred fund is connected to the general fund. So if down the road, we have too much money in that capital fund, because it's not restricted, it's part of the general fund. But we set it aside for annual capital, like the projects that we're doing this year is one point two million. Those are your annual capital projects. So if in the future we put too much money in there, you want to move it to the general fund, you can't. But it's just for us to see like, oh, we know in the future that we have this capital fund. I'm not going to name the village, but I know a village that's one year ahead in their revenues and they can sit and do a budget today and know that money's already there because they've accrued it in prior years. So just remember that it's not a restrictive fund. It hasn't been tagged or earmarked to anything. It's just for us to know next year we have this big project. We know for sure we have the money.
Trustee Pierce.
There was over two million dollars in the water sewer capital.
That's correct. Two point five million. That's available for long-term capital.
Do we, do we have long-term projects for water and sewer besides?
Lead services.
Yeah, I know. We got lead service. We got, uh, the road on, at the fire department that has, we got hit by the ETA, uh, for not, for the backups that always occur there. We got parts, neighborhoods that probably have, uh, a hundred and fifty year old wood pipes in them or something still. I don't know what.
That's correct. But these funds I'm talking about are funds that I believe we're having the discussion right now to use for the village hall and the public works building.
Part of the funding formula that was devised for public works was being subsidized from the water sewer fund.
Okay, so.
Because it is going to house water sewer.
And I was kind of picking that up, but I'm trying to get at is we've got other projects and water and sewer that need to be done.
Yes.
And we need to start discussing those because we haven't discussed them in quite a while.
Yes, agreed.
And if I could comment on that, it's important you keep an eye on the, um, surpluses, the annual surpluses for the water sewer. Because you're almost just breaking even, which tells me we have to have a deeper discussion on the generation of revenues for the water sewer so that we can meet those goals, trustee Pierce, that you're discussing. Especially with the system that's so expensive to maintain and to replace. I highly recommend that we have those discussions during our capital to discuss like, you know, the water sewer is just breaking even. It has a fixed rate, annual rate. The revenues seem to just be consistent every year. But we know that in the future, you're going to have a lot of work to do with the infrastructure, the towers. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, police. All right, Chuck.
Good evening. During the S one sport meeting, uh, we heard residents voice their concerns of speeding on Hillside, uh, two fifty nine on that strip. We also heard of residents, uh, speeding on Bay Shore. And that was during the Starbucks conversation. I don't know if you guys recall that. Um, we heard their voices and in response, we conducted a study and enforcement. Um, we heard their voices and in response, we conducted a study and enforcement operations in that area. We identified in landmark, there was no speed limit signs within the, um, first curb. We worked with Public Works and, uh, erected speed limit signs there. And after we did a seven-day study, three hundred and two vehicles went there and the average speed was twenty miles per hour. But I think that had resolved the issue. As far as Hillside Avenue, Route fifty-nine, we do have speeding issues there. Uh, we have about two thousand vehicles that travel through there on a seven-day period, mainly from seven AM to seven PM. And sixty-five percent of them are speeding. Uh, we are gonna conduct a vigorous, an intense, um, operation there, a traffic enforcement detail. And we're gonna monitor that, collect the data and analyze that in sixty days to see if our objectives are met. So their voices were heard and we're taking action. As far as accomplishments, uh, we led a multi-jurisdictional training with our neighboring agencies for rapid deployment. Uh, we worked with Lake Villa, Fox Lake, Lennonhurst and the Aniac Fire Department. Uh, the training consists of responding to an active shooter, limiting that threat and rescue force operations. Uh, we continue to work through the shooting investigation that occurred at Hillside and Harden. We expect further charges in the future as we continue with the forensic and the ballistic investigation. Our two school resource officers, Mackel and Schultz, start next week. Expect nothing but an awesome school year with them on one thirty, on one seventeen and thirty-four. And I'm sure as you guys have seen on Lake and McHenry County scanner, the, uh. House party that spilled out into the streets on Ida last year. Uh, the offender who was in possession of the R fifteen with the fifth round drum was sentenced to two years to U.S. Next month, Sergeant Bruce Alley and Sergeant Bonner Ruddy will begin their extensive training with the Northwestern School of Staff and Command. It's an intensive eight, eight-week training program geared towards supervision, leadership and overall police command operations. This is part of the leadership development program that Chief Gutcher established three years ago, and I was blessed to be able to attend myself. Um, previously, the, this internationally recognized training was offered only to the executive leadership of the department. In order to prepare, prepare the department for the future, Chief Gutcher established the goal of having all sworn supervisor staff attend the training. Also, the DNC starts on next week and Officer Rob Wright, who is part of Mobile Field Force Four North. Uh, he'll be on his eight-day deployment starting Friday. And all expenses will be reimbursed to the village by alias. Losing our report unless there's any questions, any questions?
No, great job.
Thank you.
Awesome, all right, thank you, um. All right, any, I didn't have any requests for executive session?
You know, the park was built by past administration, and I just don't know if. Past people like Jay Joswick, Jerry Johnson, Larry Hanson, Mary Domenick, were they invited?
Yeah, I made sure that all, any former trustee, any mayor.
Larry told me he was kind of. Or he didn't, he didn't receive any invitation.
Yeah. I know there was an email invitation, so any. Former living trustee, mayor, spouse of mayors, so I'll make sure that, um, I'll talk to Rachel.
He came to me and said, I did not get an invitation.
No, that was, yeah, that is not, um.
Is he looking for an invitation in the mail, possibly?
Yeah, they're all emails, but we'll check. I'll make sure Rachel, I'll make sure Rachel follows up. Okay, cause I know as of today, she had about a hundred RSVPs somewhere in that range, but I'll make sure that, uh. He follows up for the ones. Okay, yeah, yeah, they should all.
Gonna be bad.
No, but all, all, all past elected officials were, uh, invited, so I, hopefully they had the right email or we'll check on that tomorrow. All right, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Pierce. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow, one less than an hour. Meeting's adjourned at seven twenty-five.